Call to order the committee, the whole meeting for December 9th, 2025. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Araza. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Malley. Malone.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman. Lowman.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Fernbach. Anderson.
Here.
White.
Here.
Two, four, six, eight, 10.
Up next would be a reminder to please speak into the microphone if you come up to use that this evening for the recording and for the broadcast of tonight's meeting. Item three would be approval of minutes from November 4th, 2025 Cowal Meeting and November 25th, 2025 Cowal Meeting. Is anything?
I have any corrections, but I'll move to approve them.
Okay.
Second.
Who's the second? Mr. Green? Okay, thank you.
No green today.
You know I have fun with it.
Until that name tag comes.
Yeah, I'm just guessing. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is item four for items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything? Okay. Move right on then to matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody here for anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move then into the consent agenda. Baron.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follow. Approvals, Resolution 2025-141-R, approving a lease with Albright Community Theater. Resolution 2025-140-R, authorization to execute amendment number two of task order number 42 with Engineering Enterprise, Inc. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
My Baron, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The record reflect Alderman Fernbach is online. Okay. Move right in then to ordinance 7.1. 7.1 is ordinance 2025-60, the 2025 tax levy.
Yeah, I'm not prepared for this, but that's all right. So this is for the tax levy for 2025. Sorry, I don't have the notes on here.
Peggy's got it.
That's okay, I can go over that for you if you don't mind. This is for the main tax levy for the city and it is recommending and requesting a levy of $13,597,700. This was, we already had a public hearing on this on November 25th, and I think there was a larger discussion at that time. I don't know if any further questions have come up. I know there are a couple of members in the audience that would like to make some comments before you vote.
Let's have them come up. Does anybody have any comments? Okay, we'll open up the public if you want to come up.
Yeah, Yvonne Dunwitty, Pine Street in Batavia. I just want to comment about the levies in general. I read the newspapers every day and I watch the news on TV. And the problem is that everybody is raising the taxes. Everybody is raising the levy. The library, the Park District, the city of Batavia, Kane County. You know, we don't have the money to pay all these increases in taxes. We have to live within our means. So when you have TIF districts, and there's so many, there's like 60 in Kane County altogether, that's taking money from the taxpayers and giving it to corporate welfare. Every time you give a tax dollar to all of these businesses around here to keep the businesses, you're taking our tax dollars. You're not giving us a break. If we need to have our house painted, or our roof put on, or we need some work done around our house, we don't get a tax break. We don't get a deduction. We get an increase in our taxes because it's an arbitrary increase in value. So I urge all of you, think twice. If you can't, if you can't keep it down and live within our means, you know, just, I've heard all the time Biden and Trump, it's your fault, the economy, Biden and Trump, it's your fault, the prices are up. It's not their fault. They don't have anything to do with what's produced here in our county and in our state. The prices of goods have gone down, but our taxes are going up, 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 up. And the cost of services are going up, 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 up. It's not the cost of goods. That's why the cost of living is there. It's because of all the local people saying, okay, we'll have a five cent gas tax, five cent per gallon gas tax. Kane County says, well, we can go up to eight cents. Batavia has an increase in grocery tax. The state took the grocery tax off, city of Batavia put it back on, and so did every other city in town. So what I'm trying to say is, we're being taxed to death, and we can't afford it. You know, I don't know how much money you all make. We're on a fixed income, and so we live within our means. I would like to see the taxing bodies live within their means for a change.
Anybody else? I will turn it back over to you, Baron, if you want to make a motion.
Okay, oh, I make a motion that we accept ordinance 2025-60-2025 for the tax levy.
Second. Second by Alderman Sulfah, recommend this to council. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Up next is ordinance 2025-61, SSA 30 for Prairie Trails South Tax Levy.
So this is a tax levy for the Prairie South in the amount of $9,350.
Right, stormwater detention, correct Peggy?
Yes, stormwater detention.
Any questions? Comments?
I move that we approve ordinance 2025-61, SSA number 30, Prairie Trails South Tax Levy.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is ordinance 2025-62, SSA number 42 for Nagel Industrial Area Tax Levy. Baron?
Yeah, thank you. So this is for the Nagel Industrial Area. This is a stormwater detention area and is a $4,480, $48 to be levied for this service area.
Any questions?
I move that we pass ordinance 2025-62, SSA 42, Nagel Industrial Area Tax Levy.
Second.
By Baron, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next then would be ordinance 2025-63, SSA 62, Batavia Main Street Tax Levy.
Thank you, this is the Main Street program for our downtown area, and the amount levied is $32,000. And this is a special service area 62.
All the downtown, or most of the downtown business area that supports this.
I move that we approve ordinance 2025-63, SSA number 62, Batavia Main Street Tax Levy.
Second.
Baron, second by Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Up next would be resolution 2025-142-R, authorizing contract agreement with Infrastructure Management Services for the citywide pavement condition survey. Just go ahead and start that for us.
You want me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have not done a pavement analysis for a couple of years, and we're looking at doing that again. Every couple of years, we've run a program where they come in and evaluate the pavement. The last time we used IMS, I was the only one in engineering that was still here, 2011. The last time we ran the program, we used a different provider, robotics, which is under Michelin Corporation now, and they don't provide this service anymore. So we went back to the industry, the standard in the industry to go with IMS. Our team went to the Public Works Conference in August. It was held in Chicago, so they went and met with some of the different vendors and got the proposal. And you see that long document in here, but it just kind of illustrates the process they go through. They run all the streets and drive them. They give us a rating. They give us all the GIS data. We can input that into our system. They run the program and see what the condition is and kind of tells us what areas of town is in a little bit more dire need for resurfacing and helps us with a five-year plan that's part of our proposal. They will run the pavement analysis over the course of approximately a week. And then over the next one to two months, they will complete the report and work on that five-year plan. And the data that they have, they will provide us will be an Excel spreadsheet with all of those points that we can then manipulate that and look at working within our budget constraints to fit the need that we have available, as well as being able, we're starting to implement parts of our asset management software, which then we'll be able to coordinate this with all of our other infrastructure improvements, water main replacements, sanitary repairs, anything where electric may need to go underground and all that stuff. So this will be, it's under the Main Streets budget, and we'll be back later this spring with the findings and the final report.
Any questions? For anybody?
Looking through it, I noticed they had a list of like additional services they could provide. One of them was analyzing our sidewalks, and that was only about $2,000, it looked like. Would that be of interest for the city to perform, given the relatively low price? I'm assuming it's done alongside the street sensor network as well.
When we evaluate the streets annually, we do have to go walk them to mark out any curb, and while we do that, we do look at the streets. So that's done by us, as well as, and we have the annual request for any sidewalks that they, any residents may come across that they see where there's a differential in grade. And we have a contractor that comes in, and we have $25,000 budgeted annually for them to come in and kind of grind off all of those. So between those two, I think we're adequately covering it right now. We, I can talk with Tim and see what their thoughts are if they talked about them, but at this point, I don't think we necessarily need to go that route.
I'd rather see us spend two grand more on concrete for sidewalks.
Then once we have a report, we might need to fix it, so Peggy might need to give me more money.
This is planned and budgeted for this year or next year?
It's for 2026.
For 26, okay. I just want to make sure we were clear on that. And I think it's a good thing that we plan out and try to prioritize streets that you might not realize are as big a problem as they are, so that they stay updated in a plan that gets, you know, constantly used. If no other questions or comments, I look for a resolution or a motion to recommend to council, resolution 2025-142-R, authorizing contract agreement with Infrastructure Management Services for citywide pavement condition survey. A second. Okay, Sulfah Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Sent, since it is a general budget then?
Yep.
All right, perfect, thank you.
And then we'll move on to item 7.6, which is a discussion on financial incentive for a restaurant concept at 15 East Wilson Street.
Do you want me to start that? Okay, so 15 East Wilson Street is at the corner of Wilson Street and North River Street, and the city has really struggled to find a long-term restaurant replacement since it had been occupied by Gaetano's and Veritas. We have had a couple of restaurant concepts go in there, but unfortunately, they have closed. But I'm really excited to bring to you today the prospect of a successful restaurant owner here in Batavia who has a proposal to lease 15 East Wilson and put another fantastic restaurant concept into this space. In addition to owning The Goat at 17 East Wilson, Chad Gravenitis also is owner of Art House Restaurant down in Aurora, which is located immediately adjacent to the Paramount Theater, and is a beautiful restaurant down there. I think Chad is here tonight, and he'll talk a little bit more about what his concept is, and I think that you'll find that it is, it meets the expectations that the community would like to see at that prominent corner in our downtown. It is very synergistic with the surrounding activities, such as the Comedy Vault, offering a place for people to go either before or after a show. It offers a different choice of restaurant from others that exist in the immediate area. The owner is going to do a significant amount of, in fact, he's really going to put in a completely different concept than exists there today, and therefore, he has estimated a plan of more than $400,000 in improvements that he would intend to make to that space. He has come to the city because this is quite an investment, and one that he is requesting an incentive from the city in order to assist with the expenses. But for the city providing this incentive, it is not likely that the business owner would be able to complete this project. However, it does contribute, it would contribute greatly to our downtown in terms of economic development. It is filling a prominent space in our downtown. It will, as I'll talk about in a minute, it also will generate revenue for the city. So what the investment is, the owner himself is going to make a personal investment of $150,000 toward the improvements that I discussed. And of the $400,000 total expenses of that, approximately $160,000 would be for demolition and site preparation, and then also permanent improvements to this, to the property, structural and framing, and mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And so staff is recommending, oh, also, I wanted to talk about the revenue projections would generate approximately $20,000 per year in sales tax, as well as $6,000 in liquor tax. So staff is recommending a grant of $150,000 to assist the owner with this project, with $100,000 to be made available for reimbursement of eligible project costs during construction, and also an additional $50,000 for reimbursement of additional eligible project costs, which would be payable annually for five years following the business owning, opening in $10,000 increments and contingent upon continuous operation as a restaurant. I'm not looking for approval of the grant this evening, but we wanted to have a discussion, and if city council is interested in pursuing this incentive, then we would ask for direction to staff to continue to work with the business owner in development of, I'm sorry, in creating a redevelopment agreements between the parties outlining the terms and conditions. Be happy to answer any questions, and we also have the business owner here tonight who can provide you more information about the concept. Alderman Peeper?
I guess to start, could we get more information on the business concept and, you know, what it's going to be and who our ideas presented?
Absolutely, Chad.
All right, how you doing? As you said, I currently have The Goat down the street here, then Art House in Aurora. Art House is probably more the way I'm leaning towards the new concept, maybe even a little escalated from that. So I'm planning on doing a concept, one entity, but each floor I would like to do. So I'm sure most of you have been in the building. The stairs that go down has a separate entrance. I want to do a little lounge, small bar on the lower floor to kind of cater to overflow to the restaurant, as well as late night for Comedy Vault and the other surrounding businesses. The ground floor, I want to do, I'm trying to, one of my partners, they have Barrel &amp; Rye, Maze &amp; Mash and stuff in Geneva and Glen Ellyn. I'll probably lean towards the Barrel &amp; Rye kind of concept, like Escalated Foods. Burger, I will do, except I don't want to compete with The Goat very much, but there will be a burger, steaks, oysters, just things you can't really get in Batavia. I think it's kind of lacking that currently. And I'm not trying to just do a Batavia restaurant, something that I want, for instance, if people go to the comedy club, I want them to have a date night at the new place. I want them to remember Batavia. I want to be one of the factors that they come back to Batavia and patronize the rest of the restaurants, the stores, coffee shops, everything. It's, I think Batavia has a lot to offer, and I want to add to that. I think River Street, the potential over there is great. I think it's probably the best, one of my favorite areas in Fox Valley. I think what you can do on that street is fantastic. I think that building is probably my favorite in downtown Batavia. And as was stated, the last few that have gone in, they've come in for a year, they kind of paint the walls, and they've done, they've tried, everybody tries to do their best, and I like the food at Thorabell's, it's great. But I kind of want to get it back to the Gaetano's feel where it was busy all the time. It was packed all the time, people loved it. Batavia people still talk about it. On Halloween Bat Fest, they, I had multiple people come up to me, I don't know how they knew about it, but they knew I was already looking at the building, and they were kind of, kind of, please do it, kind of like cheerleading for it. And that's what I'm looking for, like the lease, I'm not, I'm not looking to come in for a year, two years, I want to be around for a while. I think I'm looking at a six-year lease right now with additions to that. So it's not something, I'm not just trying to come in and open something, paint the walls, I'm trying to transform that building. I want to do everything on the first floor, the ground floor, and then upstairs, we're going back and forth. Right now, I'm leaning towards kind of a event space, overflow seating a little bit. I want to kind of open the space up a little bit. If anybody's been in there, they have that little bar in the middle of the room, kind of, I kind of want to open all that up. And there's been talk about putting a little bar up there for the events and utilize those two rooms at the front with the awesome windows facing Wilson Street. And I have, I sent out pictures right before I got here, so I don't know if anybody's been able to see it, just kind of conceptual ideas. I have paper I could pass around if you guys would like to take a look, but I'll just do that right now. These are just very, kind of preliminary ideas. Things will change, it's not, nothing is set in stone, but it's kind of what I'm looking for. I want to, I want to utilize every space of it, I want to utilize the patio for the farmer's markets, I want it to be a focal point of the farmer's market. I want, it's just, I want Batavia to be proud of that. I think, I'm pretty proud of Goat. Goat, I mean, it's small, it is, it's a burger place, but I'm proud of that. Art House, I don't know if you guys have been able to get over to Aurora, but highly recommend it. But it's, that's a step in the direction, I want this to be the next step. I want, I want to just keep evolving, and I want Batavia to be the place I do that in. There's, I don't want this to be the only place, I want to do, keep doing places in Batavia. There's multiple locations in Batavia that I like, and there's spaces available right now. I've been looking at this space for, I think it's been over two years, and just timing wasn't great for it, and got Aurora done, that's been a year now, and I want to focus back on that, and it just kind of, everything fell into place. The business, or the building owner and I have a great relationship, and he's been coming to me for those two years. He wanted me to move Goat over there, he goes, you need a bigger space, get over here. But yeah, I just think everything's kind of falling into place perfectly, and I just want to add to Batavia. I think Batavia is growing, I want to be a part of that growth, I want to keep adding to it.
I've been to Art House, it's great. You've done a great job there, and I love the story about how you rolled that concept out, and how you really looked at what people were asking for there, and how it didn't work, but incorporated what their big sellers were. So to me, that speaks that you understand the restaurant industry and what it makes to be successful. And I've followed many of your concepts throughout the area, have been at all of them also. But my question that I have is, I know that that space over there, especially the kitchen, is really weird, especially with, you know, where's the entrance or whatever. Is that something that you're going to be looking at changing to help with the flow of service for that?
I am, if you look at those papers, I, I'm planning on opening the kitchen back up the way it was, I want it to be kind of an exposed kitchen again, I want. So I think right now they have little tables, it's just, they just closed it up completely, there's tables along that wall. I'm going to open it up, and I want to do kind of a chef's table feel, where people can sit there and watch the cooks, and I want it to be a little bit of an experience for everybody that's coming in. And I do, I understand what you're saying, and that when you go in the arches, when you first walk in the front door, that's going to be opened up too, to hopefully help with the getting food out of the kitchen, helping. One of the complaints I did hear, and I don't know if you're going along these lines, the tables right there, you hear everything in the dish room, you hear the dish machines, you hear everything, and that is something we're going to have to work on and figure that out, but the flow, it's easy to say now because I'm just hoping right now what it would go like, but I think opening the kitchen back up will alleviate a lot of the problems. At Art House, we have the open kitchen where we use that whole counter to put food on the servers, come in, and it's quick, we kind, especially being next to the theater, we have to keep things moving quick because everybody's on a schedule to get over there pretty quick. But I'm not sure I'm answering your question really, but I do.
No, you're doing a great job.
But I do think, I think opening the kitchen up a little bit and exposing it will help with just the whole flow of the restaurant.
And then as far as engineering, is that something that you're still kind of working on and taking pieces from each of the other concepts, or?
Yeah, so I am, we're still definitely working on it, nothing's set in stone, but over there, it's not going to be as burger-centric as either place. There will be a burger, we will, I want it to be, I want it to be elevated, but I want it to still be cost efficient. I don't want to really price anybody out. I want, I don't think you have to, I don't think food has to be expensive to look good and be good in preparation. I think we can still keep it affordable, but still have a good experience and still, people feel like they're spending money, like a lot of money out at a fancy place somewhere. I think I can still create that experience for people.
I can tell you, I get that in the places that I go to. So you've done a great job on that, and just with my background, I completely understand what you're going through and understand what you're doing. So I'm excited to see this come to Batavia, and I'll be cheering it all along.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming, and excited to hear everything that you're thinking of doing. My question about that space, having been My question about that space, having been there multiple times, is the access to the upstairs and that very scary, steep, you know, staircase. What are you thinking about the access to upstairs? Is that something you can talk about?
It is, and that is, so the access, it's still, we're going to keep it the one entrance way, but one of the biggest expenses we have right now is we're going to redo all those, the whole stairs. Hate losing how it looks and I like how it looks, I like the art of it, but safety-wise and everything, we are going to, we're changing the staircase. We're going to, I believe my contractor said he wants to lower the first landing a little bit and just kind of, just kind of make it not so steep because the stairs in that entire building are extremely steep.
So you're going to make like a few steps, like a landing and then like, okay.
Yep.
Okay, great.
That's the plan, yeah.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yep, because I fully agree. And we, we batted around the idea of trying to figure out a different way of, a different access point, just so we can fit more people up there. Because right now, I think we can only get approved for maybe just under 50 people up there, which if we do the right concept, that's, it'll be fine.
Just looking at these pictures right now, I love the concept. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. First off, yeah, the Goat is great. I love going there. You've done a great job with, with the unique space. I haven't had a chance to go to Art House, but you know, it does give me the confidence you can understand unique spaces and filling it in. And as far as the city's role in this and sort of what's on the table here, should we be the ones to help grant and fund this? I think first off, based on what we've seen from Chad, from you coming to us, I think we got the right person, right? We have somebody who has a proven track record, who can do this sort of thing. And so that is a big sort of vote of confidence in my book. Also, I, I think it's great for us as a city to support businesses that are investing in our historic buildings, right? We just had a big conversation about historic buildings and I think if they're occupied and useful, that's good, good for everybody. I think that spending a little bit of our money to help other people spend money on it is a real value add. So from that perspective, I really think that this feels like the right fit and the right way for us to go to help keep River Street, keep that historic area kind of activated and, and moving forward. A question I have is, what might be something that would qualify for a reimbursement? What is sort of a reimbursable?
Sure. That's a great question because I think that's very important. We wouldn't want to invest in things that could potentially walk away in the future, right? So the structural modification of the stairs is a perfect example because that is making those stairs more accessible and definitely a permanent improvement. All of the things that are being done that are structural and framing, mechanical, electrical and plumbing, there are HVAC improvements that will be made, there is additional fire protection. I imagine that that has to do with your kitchen. I know that the building was sprinklered at some point recently.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have to add, this is GC talk, but I don't know much about it, but um, yeah, we definitely have to change the sprinklers. We're going to have to add to the hoods probably, but yeah, it's-
Yeah, and again, that sort of builds my confidence in this being a wise investment for us because again, I, I'm sure it's going to be successful, I hope it is in the off chance. It's not, it's not going away, right? It's going to help the next person, hopefully we don't get there, of course, but. So again, it kind of helps us keep that area that we spent so much time, effort and energy in, keeping people down there, spending money, having fun. I'll tell you that, I've said this, I'll say this to anybody who will listen, sitting outside on River Street in the middle of the summer at night is my favorite spot in Batavia. It's just like magical and amazing. I love the trivia down there, I love it when I can listen to music down there and I'd love to eat like a, not that any of the food down there is necessarily bad, but maybe a step up type of meal. So I'm really excited for this.
Thank you.
I had a quick question, but then Jim also had a comment. He threw in the Zoom, so I'll, I'll kick it to him afterwards.
Okay.
We have the owner or the potential new operator in front of us, we have the city. I think the owner of the building is the third leg of this tripod that we're not seeing. So obviously, as you're looking to invest in the city, that's, that's excellent. We want to continue to push you to do that, but I think we should also bring in the owner of that property and, and what are they willing to do with this as well? Obviously, they're looking at a long-term lease, that's benefit to them as well for some stability. So I'd like to see something along those lines added to this discussion as well. I don't know what-
He would be very open to doing that. We had a great meeting, all, the three parties all had a very good meeting last week, so.
Sure, we got all three legs of the tripod.
We're all on the same page.
Alderman, back.
Yeah, hey, can you folks hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, you know, I did, so Chad, thank you for doing this, I really appreciate it. I love how Barrel and Rye and Burger Logo complement each other, even though they're only two blocks apart. I, I mean, it sounds like you're thinking of the same thing between these, between the Goat and this new concept, which I think is awesome. I just want to stress, for those who don't know what the Goat space looked like before Chad got his hands on it, it was awful. It was an insurance, an insurance office down below and an apartment up top. Chad, Chad and his team came in and completely transformed it like you wouldn't believe. And more importantly, the Goat was like the first sign that Batavia was truly updating in the modern sense, right? Because instead of trying to just do a route preservation, it did a property renewal, right? So sort of to Kevin's point made earlier, a renewal of this property is well worth the money as, as long as our investment stays with the property. And then, you know, finally, before, before I leave it, you know, Chad's a known winner. He's, I, I want to say we invested on the Goat building transformation, we got that money paid back in spades. And keep in mind, Chad stayed, stayed, stayed here through, through the pandemic, right? So, so, I mean, money follows winners. He's already a demonstrated winner, let's pile on and, and get this, this, this new site stood up. Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly share the sentiments of the council, I'm in support of the idea. I will tell you, the thing as the liquor commissioner and as one who visits all the senior living communities in Batavia about once a year, the one drawback on the building is the stairway. And I don't know if there's such a thing as you could put in a stair lift or something for some of the older people to get up those stairs, because that's one of the more heavier stairs for anybody in downtown Batavia that you got. So that's, that's the issue that I see, that's the only thing, it's something you need to work on.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. I would love to do something like that because, I mean, the more people I can get up there, the better, so.
Anybody else have any comments? I'll throw my two cents in. You know, I've been here long enough to see us spend money on other buildings and the questions we're asking now are the same things that I asked or other people asked earlier was, does that money stay in that building? You know, is that something that isn't just specific to the current owner, operator, you know, leasing, whatever, that's in that building? And I think then that's a good investment to me. And you know, I, personal connection to this building is my son, who's a chef in Chicago, worked, started in there with Gaetano when they started and he learned a lot from him and has now parlayed that into his job downtown at a Boca restaurant at Sierra. And so it's, you know, a place I think he'd be really happy, he's 6'8", he'd be really happy when the kitchen gets opened up so he wouldn't bang his head in there as he used to when he worked there. But I really think that, that, you know, anything you do to make access easier to the building from the outside and in the inside will be a benefit. You know, I mean, I know for the years we went in there, when my in-laws went with her, we had a big family party or anything at Gaetano's, it was always, we were in the main floor, we never went upstairs. So, but you know, and I, I really enjoyed the market that was there. I don't think that's part of your concept and that's fine.
One of the ideas we batted around, I batted around kind of doing something like that down there.
It's, from knowing the experience of what they went through prepping and my son did a lot of it, it's a lot of work to do that and it's a very small space. So I really look forward to seeing this get renovated to, you know, something that's at a level that your other restaurants are at. So I'm excited about it.
Another question I thought of, where does the money come from? I'm new, so I don't know.
Yeah, that is a wonderful question to ask because ordinarily, when we do redevelopment agreements, it occurs within our TIF areas, but because this building is located in TIF 1, TIF 1 ends at the end of this year. And so this money will come from the general fund. And so it's very important that we approach this and that we truly feel that there is a public good that is coming from investing this money. And there is the revenue that will be generated by it. We know that we have had turnover of multiple restaurants in this location and now we have an owner who has a proven track record. We have an opportunity to have that, you know, higher scale restaurant that's in a very focal piece of real estate in our downtown. And so we don't take that lightly, investments that we make in private properties from our general fund, but we think that the public good that will come from this warrants it. I would also like to disclose that while Chad carries many craft brews in his businesses, one of those sometimes happens to be the beer that my husband sells from his brewery too. So I, you know, don't want this to be seen as any type of conflict of interest. He sells to dozens of businesses throughout the Fox Valley area, but I just think I should say that.
So we're, we're talking about 150,000, right? That's what you said? 160, 150?
100 that is payable as he does his build out, 50,000 of which would be paid on each anniversary that he has opened $10,000 for five years.
Yeah, I mean, my, my opinion of this is, you know, and I understand how there might be some public confusion around, you know, we're raising taxes and giving away money to businesses and things like that. This needs to be done. I just want to put it out to the ether that, you know, things like this will pay themselves over tenfold, maybe more. This will be the gift that keeps on giving, hopefully your restaurant's there forever. But should, should something happen, things like that, I mean, this, I know it's been said a couple of times, but this is a great blueprint. We need to look back at this as, you know, how we bring the parties together, how our staff works with the business, how we work with the business or the building owner, bring it to council. I'm not saying every time it's going to be yes, but this is exactly, I think, what this council's looking for in terms of, tell us what needs to be done and then, you know, we'll, we'll come up with hopefully an answer for, for everybody that makes sense. But I'm excited, I love, I love the Goat. I haven't been to Art House, but I'll have to get out there and, you know, appreciate everything you've done for the town so far and pumped to get this thing open.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
And I really think that this is a keystone property of, of that area. I mean, it's right there at the entrance to River Street. I think it's something that needs to have a thriving business in it.
Anybody else? Okay.
So I have direction to work on this redevelopment agreement.
Yep.
Oh, that's it, I'm sorry.
I'm a very big fan of the Goat. I like going there quite a bit, it's in my district, in my ward as well. I do have slight concern, it is $150,000, it's not nothing. Were other funding mechanisms considered like maybe a interest-free or even forgivable loan from the city as a sort of different hedge? For instance, a forgivable loan could be for the amount and then every year that the business maintains operations, some of that gets sliced off instead of having to be paid back. Just as a way to, to hedge like, you know, potential outcomes from this business being in place rather than an upfront investment of a full grant. I don't know, would you be open to that as well?
I'm open to, yeah, I'm open to anything. I like the structure, I like, like how this one was structured where it was kind of the reimbursement. So in a way, it is kind of slicing at it, so, but yeah, I understand completely what you're, you're saying and I'm open to, I'm open to talk about anything.
I do. No, no, this is just discussion and giving direction to staff. And we have a member of the public who would like to comment.
Come on up and use the mic.
Okay, my name is John Q. Public, the taxpayer. Actually, it's Carl Dinwiddie here in Batavia. And my head is spinning, I think this is the biggest numbers I've ever heard on an incentive, which is good. And I am familiar with the term public good is because that came out a lot when I was working on my MPA, we talked about public good. But I'm going to talk a little about Mr. Wonderful from Shark Tank. I see no numbers, I see no guarantees. I wonder what I would like to see, if it was me, the taxpayer, getting to write this contract, we'll give you taxpayer money to do these things you want to do to get this restaurant in Batavia, but we're going to have a payback and we're going to keep the numbers every year of how much tax dollars you bring into the city. And when your tax dollars equal how much money the taxpayers have loaned you for this project, then there's, there's no debt. But if you leave early or something happens or you close down, I mean, I'm thinking elevators, sprinkler systems, a lot of unknowns with no numbers on it right now, but having said that, when you, enough tax revenue comes off to pay how much we have given you for this project for the public good, then there's no more debt. But write, write the agreement that you have to pay us back if you walk out or something happens, you have to pay the taxpayers back. And that's my comments from Mr. Wonderful, who likes to see numbers.
The only thing I'd say to that real quick is that we're being diligent in the fact that we have a aging inventory of buildings here in, in the city that unfortunately have hindered a lot of occupancy and, and especially of occupancy of the types of businesses that I think this council and the vast majority of this town want to see come in here. So we found ourselves in this juxtaposition where, you know, I agree with you, we need to be very mindful, but we are coming in to the point and we just had another instance with a chimney, you know, where maybe not, we're, we're not paying for it, but it's an instance where it was a hindrance on anyone coming into that building. You know, these stairs are another example of that or, you know, so what I'll just say is, we're purposely making sure the 150,000, and please tell me if I'm speaking out of school, but goes to core infrastructure upgrades to the building that basically, yes, for a short term, do benefit Chad and his concept here, but in all reality, they're benefiting the building owner and the city the most, in my opinion, long-term.
Hey, this is Jim and I apologize for not being in the room. So if I sound like I'm interrupting, I apologize. To Carl's point, and he has a very good point, wouldn't we just put a lien on the building owner if, if we were, we were still owed money that wasn't paid back? I'm assuming we, we just put a lien on the property, is that, is that correct, Laura?
This is what has sometimes been problematic in the past with loans. So the loan would be to the business owner, the loan would not be to the property owner. And so it is unlikely that the property owner would accept a lien for someone else's obligation.
Well, but to the death by devil's advocate, if the improvements are going to the building, the building owner is getting the benefit regardless of kind of who goes through there. So we should probably bring this up as an item with the building owner because we have had projects in the past. I mean, let's, let's be honest, right? Let's talk about the, the Wilson Street project, the big condo, I forgot the name, I lose it right now. And what happened there, right? We got to like literally the week before we were breaking, breaking ground and, and the, and the building owner, the developer walked away, right? So now we lose a bunch of investment, we lost a bunch of time that we, that we're still dealing with, right? And that area is still vacant. So I think it's valid to say, hey, you know, we need some sort of recovery mechanism in here that says if this doesn't happen or if the money is spent on the building successfully to improve the building and the business still doesn't happen, the city, you know, should be compensated. That's, that's my take on it, I'm not sure if anyone else in the room feels the same way. Again, very strongly support this project, very strongly impressed by the wonderful thing that Chad and his team did for the Goat, the Goat location, because as one of the few people on council who probably remembers what it looked like, looked like before the Goat was, the, into Tim's point, we are just going to get money from the improvements, Chad's team to do that building. money from the improvements, Chad, Chad's team to do that building for the next 20 years, right? He's already paid us back multiple times over with the additional tax revenue that he's bought in. However, given that we're going to put in 150 plus into this building, it'd be nice to talk about how we, how we could potentially recover our investment if for whatever reason this project doesn't happen.
So I just want to point out in both cases, both the one Washington Place project, that developer put millions of dollars into the project. It wasn't just the city who put millions of dollars into that project only due to, you know, the, the economic circumstances at the time that the project could not move forward. Similarly, in this circumstance, um, the, there is a significant personal investment from Chad, and I'm not sure, you know, as you said, I'm not sure what investment the property owner is making as well, but they all have skin in the game.
Yeah, um, I, I'm going to echo, uh, what Alderman Lancy shared there. I think that it's okay for us to spend some public funds on this. I think there's a lot of great ways to do it, though I do think we're asking the right questions, right? One thing I'd be interested in seeing is I know we've put some money into other properties before. It'd be kind of nice to see, have we gotten a return on that in the past, right? What are some of the other properties? I'm also relatively new. So, you know, whenever folks have a chance, it'd be nice to see kind of where we put money before and then maybe give me like a little, you know, not exact tax receipts, but like what, you know, did we see a bump? Did we see some sort of return? Also with the expectation that we're going to miss sometimes, right? We are going to get it wrong on occasion and that happens. Uh, we are having kind of a further discussion, you know, is a grant the right approach, right? You grant the money and they have it and hopefully it works out. Or do we loan the money where we have something that we can collect back? And does that loan go to the property owner where we can foreclose on the property, which I don't think we should do that. I don't like the idea of that. Or does it go on the property owner where we then be selling fryers and, um, vent hoods if we ended up having to, to take adverse action on them? From, from my side of things, I like the grant side of it. Um, it keeps everything amicable and I, I don't foresee, in this property in particular, I don't foresee it being a huge risk because it is going into the building. The last comment I'd make on that is maybe we can also get creative on where the funds come from. I've been thinking a lot on historic preservation since our last conversations. It feels to me like, um, perhaps using, uh, intentionally setting aside some of our gambling revenue for historic preservation and sort of downtown historic development could make some sense. Gambling revenue isn't necessarily tax money, right? People are making a choice to contribute that funds, those funds. And, um, it would sort of give a purpose to our video gambling, uh, in, in the downtown that when, and, and as I'm thinking on, as I haven't been thinking on this over the weeks, we make it an intentional grant program that is specifically designed to making historic properties, um, occupiable, right? Specifically so that historic properties, not to preserve the property necessarily, but to make that property useful. That's an idea I've been milling about. It's very much in its infancy, but it kind of helps. It's not the tax money then, right? We're not raising your taxes to do this. We are using something people are choosing to do to help preserve and promote something else that we want in a historic area. So I think that that might alleviate some of our concerns. If we're losing gambling money, I'm not saying that's not important money or anything, but it's, it's a little less impactful than if we're losing property tax money or gas tax money or ABCD. Just some thoughts, um, that I'm kind of having as we're thinking on what the funding mechanism is and what the risk exposure to the city.
So there have been four instances where the city has, uh, provided loans as incentives to new businesses. In 50% of the cases, we have had to end up in litigation over that. So you had pointed out that sometimes that that puts, loans put strains on the relationships between the, um, the person who has the loan and the, and the city. In two other circumstances, people, uh, paid the loan back. One of those businesses is successful and the other one is not. It's about a 50, I would say 50% of the businesses were successful and contributing. Um, and 50% ended up ultimately not to be. So it, it can be kind of hit or miss on the, the loan scenario. I think from a staff perspective, we would recommend the, the grant versus, um, the loan. There's also, you know, um, some, uh, cities set up, uh, like, uh, tax rebate programs, but I think under the circumstances, and Chad could confirm this for me, the funding is needed in order to do the construction necessary to open the building and it can't really wait for, as tax revenues come in.
Yeah. And just a quick comment on a tax rebate side of things. This is very personal and anecdotal, but, um, for example, I put solar panels on which gave me a very significant tax rebate, uh, two and a half years later. So it required a loan structure upfront. I had to be loaned to the money to then claim the tax rebate to then pay back. And it's, it's sort of a process. I'm not saying it's a useless process. I obviously was able to navigate it, but there are administrative challenges and it's a barrier to entry that is, I think, pretty significant. So I also do not love the idea of a tax rebate.
Two things.
Oh, sorry. I was going to say, um, that was kind of the idea of my loan, of my forgivable loan suggestion is that the forgivable loan would effectively act as a tax rebate where the money comes upfront, just if it came to that, kind of also to speak to Carl's suggestion.
We did that. I was going to say that a couple of things that come to mind right away was we did that with Water Street Studios with forgivable loan. And then actually three things now. Um, the, uh, money that we would pay back to them over five years would be tied to the business still being there. So that $10,000 a year would be something that would be back to that. And I'll say one of the success stories that I think we've had downtown is where sturdy shelter is now. That was done by an architecture firm, came in, rebuilt that building, repurposed the building, and they used it with the knowledge that they were not going to stay there and that they were building that building to be able to be used by somebody else when they moved from it. So I think that's another thing that, you know, in this case too, 10, 20 years down the road, what gets improved in the building could be saved and used for a future owner or a future tenant. So I think that's important to remember that, you know, we do have things that have worked like that downtown. Okay. I think you know where most of us would like to go.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to, uh, updates, which would be project status.
Well, first I'd like to, uh, congratulate Max on, um, also Steve and Andrea, thank you for being here tonight as well for the IRP, uh, the preliminary IRP public meeting. Uh, we had a lot of good conversation. Thank you to all of the aldermen who also, um, were able to be here tonight. That's exactly what we were hoping to get from this session was for it to be an interactive process, for people to learn more about the preliminary IRP. And then also to be able to share their, uh, comments and opinions as the, uh, process moves forward. Um, the, the final draft of the IRP to be considered, as Max pointed out, um, will be coming March of next year and, um, we'll have a similar public meeting with comments and then ultimately, uh, a decision by, uh, the committee of the whole and city council to approve that IRP. A little later than March. Okay.
And something I wanted to say is, you know, I've been down here to try to listen to, you know, just what was going on, didn't get here as soon as I wanted to, but heard enough. I think one of the misconceptions that I hear from the public that I interact with or, you know, get pulled aside for, you know, a comment here or there, or some of the stuff on social media, is I think people don't understand that this is the preliminary steps to creating a plan that we're going to try and use. So we're ahead of what the state wants or is going to force us to do. And to try to know that that plan is not forever, that it has to be constantly reviewed and it's constantly going to get changed, whether that's every three years or every five years. I think it's really important that that gets out there to the public, that we're in the infancy stages right now, trying to figure out how to put all of this together. The state is still in that stage as well. So I think it's really important that the public, you know, that we make sure the public knows that and acknowledges it because I, I constantly hear even just, you know, somebody grabbed me the other day, you know, why are you going to build this plant and run on? That's just an idea. We haven't gotten to the point where we said yes to anything. So, you know, just because it's in a draft plan does not mean it's in a final draft of this or, you know, what we exactly want to do over the next couple of years. And I guarantee you that is going to change, whether it's three years, five years, one year, it rapidly is going to be changing over the next decade or two. So I think that's really important for people to understand. So anytime you get the chance to say that to somebody or to try to explain that, make sure we do that. Cause I think that's really important because I feel like people are already in this mindset that everybody's mind is made up and this is exactly what we're going to do or this is the road we're going to go down. I don't think we're ever going to do that again. So I think that it's really important that that gets said over and over and over about the IRP. On top of that, even when it's done, isn't it like a framework for us?
Yes.
Right? So it's, I mean.
It's making the decision to build a plant.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of like the strategic plan. It's a plan. It's guidelines of what we want to do.
Right.
One thing that I should probably mention is, um, the way that, uh, leaves coming down and snow coming down this year really posed a huge challenge for our public works department. A lot of people don't realize that we utilize the same equipment for clearing the streets of snow that we usually drive around town and, and pick up leaves. And that Thanksgiving week being a shortened week, we were doing one of the sides of routes of town. And as we heard that the huge snowstorm was going to come on Saturday, we had to start flipping that equipment over. So unfortunately there are a bunch of people who've got some piles of wet leaves under snow and we're sorry about that. And I hope that you know that we always, we try to do our best, but there just are only a certain number of hours in a day. But, you know, come, come springtime, we'll be there trying to clean all that up. So Andrea, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that? No, but we've been getting some calls about people of, they're like, what, what can you do right now for me because it's going to be there in spring? And there's really nothing we can do right now.
They did do brush pickup.
Yes, they did.
As long as you had the snow cleared off the brush and it wasn't frozen to the ground.
Right.
They got it.
They got it.
I got asked, are we going to do it when the snow melts? Are we going to go get the leaves?
No.
You know, when the guy talked to me, he's got a big pile in his shop.
Yeah. First off to, to play the role of Alderman Solfi here as a reminder, you can put them in the bags and you can put them on the street and that's the usual thing, right? Unfortunately, the, the vacuum truck, you know, won't come around necessarily, but uh, free pickup if you get them in the bags. We can do that. Also, I know we say it every year and, and it's never, never fast enough, right? Cause it's not instantaneous, but I really always am impressed with the street clearing and, uh, you know, especially with the amount of snow and the duration of the snow. Um, you know, it's worth repeating again that a good job, um, kind of keeping our, our main thoroughfares clear for, for everyone to get through as best they can.
And go out and go through other towns. It was really good here.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any others?
As you know, I serve as chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plantings, Council of Mayors, which is headquartered downtown in the old post office building. Uh, our group is the ones that do all the studying on how the region is growing and where the money is being spent and who needs it and all this other good stuff. I would just tell you that our town, not because I'm the mayor, but because what's happening here, we're one of the fastest growing cities in the region at this moment. And, uh, I've had other mayors call me and want to know, what are you doing out there to get it all? And I mean, I know we are pretty close to 800 new houses built between 2022 and 2026. And Peggy, are we at a, what's our assessed valuation total in the city at the moment?
1.5 billion.
How much?
1.5 billion.
Okay. Well, that's a, that's a very impressive number. I mean, they say comparing where we were 10 years ago versus where we are today, uh, there's a bunch of cities specifically down south that are in really bad trouble. They're shutting down departments and doing everything else. And I get calls from the mayors down there wanting to know, what's the secret up there? Why, why are you getting all this? And, you know, there's, a lot of it is probably, I think, the sensibility of the government. And there's a lot of these towns that don't have a lot of good elected officials and they get themselves into trouble. But I just wanted to let you know, we're kind of one of the models of how you, if you're a city and you want to grow and prosper, uh, Batavia is one of those that's being cited by folks in the city that that's a place to come out and take a look at.
Talk about two things, Mayor. One is it's not in our water because we took the radium out. And then two, it's the fair meat bubble.
680 acres and if that weren't there, can you imagine how big Batavia would be just on that piece of ground by itself?
We have two high schools.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.